Being seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Baspus.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Collins.
Here.
Commissioner Gary.
Here.
Commissioner Talantino.
Here.
Commissioner Torrey.
Here.
Okay, we're all here. Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I would ask those with cell phones, if you would please put them on vibrate or turn them off, we would appreciate it. Item number one is the introduction of firefighter/paramedic Peter Windsor. I'd like that Fire Chief Scott Labonte to come forward. Evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This evening, I have the pleasure of introducing you to the newest addition of the Fire Department, probationary firefighter/paramedic Pete Windsor. Before the deputy city manager swears him in, I'll give you a little background on Pete. But first, if I could turn your attention to the video monitors for a moment, thank you. You'll notice two people in the photo. The Sioux firefighter sitting on the fire truck is now retired firefighter Bill Billy Bob Windsor, who retired back in 2002. The young boy in the photo is Billy Bob's grandson, who happens to be the same firefighter that I have the pleasure of introducing you to today, Pete Windsor. For the first time in known history, we have a legacy at the Fire Department. Pete was born at Camp Pendleton, where his father was stationed as a Marine. Pete attended high school in Kearney, Michigan, and he attended LSSU, where he attained a bachelor's degree in fire science and paramedicine. Peter now lives on Sheridan Street here in Sioux St. Marie and enjoys hunting and fishing in his off time. At this time, would our deputy city manager please administer the city's oath?
Have you raise your right hand? I do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of firefighter and paramedic in and for the city of Sioux St. Marie, County of Chippewa, and State of Michigan according to the best of my abilities.
Thank you.
I just want to take a second to add that it's customary for a firefighter to receive their badge after their one year of probation. Pete is actually going to have the pleasure of wearing his grandfather's badge at that time, so it's just kind of a neat addition.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, best of wishes. Item number two, public comment on scheduled agenda items. Any person may reserve time to speak on an agenda item, not to exceed three minutes per person. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an agenda item? Okay, hearing them, we'll move on to item number three, the consent agenda. Deputy City Manager Troyer.
A minute approval. One, approval of the minutes of the regular city commission meeting of November 20th, 2017, and the special city commission meeting of November 29th, 2017. Recommended action is to approve the minutes of the regular city commission meeting of November 20th and the special city commission meeting of November 29th. Item two, acceptance of the minutes of the following boards and commissions. A Sioux St. Marie Housing Commission of August 23rd and September 14th, 2017. Recommended action is to accept the minutes of the various boards and commissions. Item B, appointments and resignations. One, resignation from the zoning board of appeals. Recommended action is to accept the resignation of Jeremy Gongyan from the zoning board of appeals for a term which expired on June 1, 2017, and send a letter of thanks for his service to this board. Item two is appointment to the existing structures board of appeals. Recommended action is to confirm the mayor's appointment of Jeremy Gongyan to the existing structures board of appeals to fill the balance of a term to expire July 1, 2019. Item C, communications. One, from the Sioux St. Marie area public schools. Request for the city to collect the 2018 summer property taxes for the Sioux St. Marie area public schools. Recommended action is to authorize the agreement for the collaboration of the 2018 summer property taxes for the Sioux St. Marie area public schools and authorize the city finance director and the city clerk to execute said agreement.
Okay, thank you. Is there a commissioner that would like something further explained on the consented agenda? Otherwise, Commissioner Talantino.
So moved to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Baspus.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino.
Yes.
Commissioner Torrey.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Item four, special orders of business. A city commission vacancy and consideration of appointment.
Okay, thank you very much. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As Commissioners are aware, during the organizational meeting held on November 13th, the city commission accepted the resignation of Commissioner Abby Baker from the partial term to which she had previously been appointed earlier in 2017. Immediately thereafter, City Commissioner Baker was sworn into the full four-year term to which she was elected on November 7th. Commissioner Baker's resignation from the partial term and acceptance of the full term has created a vacancy on the city commission. This vacancy is for the partial term that was vacated by Commissioner Baker that runs to November 2019. Section 5.7 of the City of Sioux St. Marie Charter states in pertinent part the following: Except as provided in the other paragraphs of the section, vacancies in the offices of Mayor and Commissioner shall within 30 days be filled for the unexpired term of the officer whose office has become vacant by appointment by a majority vote of the members of the commission then in office of a person possessing the qualifications for the office. And further, if any vacancy in the office of Mayor or Commissioner is not so filled within a said 30 days after such a vacancy occurs, the vacancy will be filled for the respective unexpired term at a special election. However, it should also be noted that Deputy City Manager Troyer has confirmed that state election law would take precedence over the provisions of the city charter. More specifically, if the city commission takes no action to fill the vacancy, potential candidates to fill the vacancy would need to follow the included schedule as prepared by the Department of State Bureau of Elections. This would require the filing of the affidavit of identity and nominating petitions by 4:00 PM on January 23rd, 2018, for the May 8th, 2018 election, at which the balance of the term would be filled if a special election were required. For clarity, it should be emphasized that no special election would be required if the vacancy is filled through appointment by the commission. As Commissioners are aware, City Attorney Canelo has previously advised that the 30-day period of time within which an appointment could be made begins when a resignation is accepted by the city commission. Accordingly, the acceptance of Commissioner Baker's resignation from the partial term at the organizational meeting has created a 30-day period of time lasting through December 13th, during which the city commission could take action to fill the current vacancy through appointment. Further, as Commissioners are aware, the city commission conducted interviews on Wednesday, November 29th, of four individuals who submitted an application to fill the vacancy on the city commission by the established deadline. These individuals included Joshua Billington, Deborah Jones, Michelle LaJoy, and Peter Skornacki. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. That concludes my update.
Okay, thank you. And since that time, we have had the individuals have gone through an application process and an interview process, the four individuals. And the process going forward, I believe, is the wish of the commission, I understand. City Manager?
If, my understanding is that, yes, the city commission at this point in time, through December 13th, would be able to fill the vacancy of the partial term through appointment.
Okay. And we had done that with the previous terms, or with the previous appointments that we had made earlier on the vacancies, the two vacancies that occurred in this past year. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Also, there was some discussion about the election that occurred and the folks that didn't make the election by not having the top three vote-getters. And that was the consensus of the commission at that time, that we would go through the application process and then go from there. And that's what we are presently doing. I think when you look at what occurred in the last appointment with Jay Gage after, was it Brent, it wasn't Brent Osterhaus, it was Jeff Stefanski when that occurred. And Jay Gage had, was the fourth vote-getter in the election, and was less than 50 votes away from being elected at that point. So that the commission at that point felt it was important to go to the remain, you know, to the next person. In the case that just happened, I believe Abby, Commissioner Baker was the third vote-getter, and you were 900 and some votes. And I believe the next, the fourth person was 400 and...
Five twelve.
Five what? Oh, you have it? What was it, Commissioner?
Nine eighty-nine and five twelve.
Five twelve? Okay, so we're 400 and some votes away. So the commission at that point thought that too big, too large, an amount to warrant an appointment, I would assume. So we went through the application process. And those, the four individuals that went through the application process were named, so. And let me say also that Shane Miller is in the audience tonight, and it's certainly nice to see Shane, and glad that you're doing better.
Thank you.
You bet. So at this point, we can proceed. Should we talk about the process? City Manager?
To clarify, Mayor, do you mean the nomination process?
Sure.
At this point in time, with the agenda item being placed in front of the city commission, nominations may be made by members of the city commission. The city clerk, deputy city manager would begin under past precedent with the position of mayor, and then rotate through the members of the city commission in alpha order.
Okay. Is there any commissioner that would like to speak before we get into the, to that process? Commissioner Gary?
I just had a couple of comments. If City Manager could just reiterate again, because I know there was some discussion about the process. And we didn't have any control over the two resignations that have happened in the last year, which were Commissioner Osterhaus and Commissioner Gage. Those were obviously surprise to us. And the candidates that were in the last election certainly were eligible to apply and to be a part of our interview process.
Yes.
We certainly had hoped that that would bring a lot of people forward, and it did bring four very qualified candidates forward. So wanted to make sure that was clear. And then also the timing, I think we had announced publicly at least a week's notice from one meeting to the next, and then from the next meeting on there. I think we had two weeks' notice before the applications were actually due in the city clerk's office, correct?
I don't know if it was total two weeks, maybe 10 days?
We had our swearing-in meeting, which was where we found out, correct? And then we had a...
We're going to ask the city deputy city manager.
I think we had a public meeting.
So the organizational meeting was on November 13th.
Yes.
The commission addressed the vacancy at the regular scheduled meeting Monday, November 20th. At that point, they made the decision to accept applications. The applications were due the following, Monday, the 27th, by 4:00 PM. And then the interviews were scheduled for that same week, Wednesday, the 29th, which brings us to today.
So there has been a lot of due process, I think, and some notices there, so just wanted to point that out and let everybody know that there was a lot of transparency in this process.
Anyone else? And before we go to the nominating process, I'd certainly like to thank the four individuals, Joshua Billington, Deborah Jones, Michelle LaJoy, and Pete Skornacki for their participation. Excellent interviews, all capable people. And now we see if we can appoint a commissioner. Thank you. The process?
Okay, so the first, I'll start with Mayor Baspus, your nomination.
Okay, I'd like to nominate Dr. Peter Skornacki. I think Dr. Pete brings a different perspective, being a private business individual on the southern end of Ashman. I know that Dr. Pete is involved in our community. He has been involved in the Madrigal for a number of years, and now has taken a leadership role, as I understand it, on the Madrigal to continue putting that tremendous event forward in the community to make it even better than it has been. You know, people get involved in that, and it's a lifetime achievement for the most part, because they continue on until they either move out of town or something else, you know, occurs. But I know I've been going a number of years as the mayor. You have a Sunday night type of thing, and it's just a tremendous event. And I also know that he sits on a number of other boards. He has a separate limited partnership corporation that is also one of his businesses. So I think that he would do an excellent job as a commissioner and be happy to bring his name forward.
Next is Commissioner Baker, your nomination.
I would also like to thank all the candidates that applied and interviewed with us. Everybody had uniquely qualified, or everyone is uniquely qualified, and it was definitely not an easy decision for me to make, as we'd be lucky to have any of them. But I would like to nominate Michelle LaJoy for the appointment to city commission. I've worked with her before throughout the DDA and the Main Street, and I feel she brings great passion for the community and will help us accomplish our goals as the commission and as a city. I really took it to heart when Mayor Baspus said we have very large shoes to fill with Bill Lynn and Ray Bauer no longer sitting on the commission, years of experience. Michelle, I feel, has extensive experience that qualifies her. She has the passion, integrity, and knowledge of our constituents deserve, and from a commissioner's standpoint, has served on a variety of boards, and has proven she can work well as a team to accomplish goals. Each candidate brings something unique to the table. However, given Michelle's extensive involvement and knowledge, she really stands out as the right person for the job.
Next is Commissioner Collins, your nomination.
No nominations.
Next is Commissioner Gary, your nomination.
Great job to all four nominees, great interviews. I think we have a great field to choose from, and I'll abstain because mine has already been nominated.
Next is Commissioner Talantino, your nomination.
Once again, as Commissioner Baker had talked about, you know, it's, the one big thing that we were asked to do is to find someone that could jump right into it, has been on boards, and has, you know, been a good positive role model or person for the city. That being said, I'm going to nominate Deborah Jones for the position. I feel, looking at what Debbie has done for the city, the different boards, the different things that she has done for our city, I feel she would be a good fit with us here. I feel her background and her resume is pretty much second to none than what we've seen. So that being said, Debbie will be my nomination.
Thank you. And next is Commissioner Torrey, your nomination.
Thank you. At this point, I'm not going to nominate, because my person's already been nominated. But I do want to thank all four candidates for coming. I do feel like we have a great field to choose from and lots of qualification there, and I'm sure we'll serve this appointment well.
So we have three nominations. I'll do a show of hands as we go through the nominations. The first nomination is Dr. Pete Skornacki. Three votes for Dr. Pete. Next nomination is Michelle LaJoy. Two votes for Michelle LaJoy. And the last nomination on the table is Deborah Jones. One vote for Debbie Jones.
Okay. Thank you. And what we have done in the past is that we will have a second vote to see if someone can get four votes. I guess we'll proceed.
All right.
Oh, I'm sorry. Second round of nominations.
So the second round of nominations. Mayor Baspus, your nomination.
I would nominate Dr. Pete, Peter Skornacki. Again, I think the south side of Ashman, I think the Main Street program that the city is embarking on is certainly a tremendous accomplishment to get the select level. And I think the DDA and Justin Nepper, and of course Commissioner Baker and Michelle LaJoy, you know, they're extremely involved in that process, along with the city manager. And I still think that, you know, the, having the perspective from the southern end of Ashman is viable. And with the amount of community involvement that both certainly Dr. Pete and his wife have put in the community, I know they would do an exceptional job, so I'd continue that effort.
Commissioner Baker, your nomination.
I will again nominate Michelle LaJoy. As I stated before, I really believe she is the best for the job as far as the experience and the, as was stated, that we needed to fill the shoes of the two commissioners that had left. And looking at our young commission and inexperience that we do have, I feel like Michelle could bring, could balance out our strengths and weaknesses on the commission and really help us move forward in benefiting the city.
Commissioner Collins, your nomination.
Again, no nomination.
Commissioner Gary?
No nomination at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Talantino?
Who'd have thought, just a few short weeks ago, I was out there with them? You know? It's really tough for me to appoint a commissioner when I've only been here a few weeks, you know? You guys are asking a lot of me here on this one. So the last four days, I did a lot of talking to constituents. You know, I want to be known as the person that listens to them. You know, I have a unique job where I go to them. I see 200, maybe 300 people in a week. That's what's going to make this job as a commissioner a little different for me versus others. That being said, I've got everything in a pecking order, so to speak. I'm going to nominate Michelle LaJoy for city commission.
Commissioner Torrey, your nomination.
No nomination.
So we have two nominations on the floor. The first is Dr. Pete. All those in favor of Dr. Pete? And the next is Michelle LaJoy. All those in favor of Michelle LaJoy? So we have a 3-3 tie.
Well, we can have a little recess, I think. I think I'm voting. Shoes that we're filling. Yeah, we're, yeah. Okay, we'll, let's try a third round of nominations.
All right, round three nominations. Mayor Baspus, your nomination.
Dr. Peter Skornacki.
Commissioner Baker, your nomination.
Michelle LaJoy.
Commissioner Collins, your nomination.
No nomination.
Commissioner Gary, your nomination.
I will nominate Dr. Peter Skornacki, and just a little bit of rationale. We've gone through a few of these rounds, and I came up with my own scoring sheet with 14 different facets on it, and I think everybody scored very well. Everybody did a great job in the interviews, some we had seen before. And Dr. Skornacki, for me, scored out slightly higher. I thought he did a very nice job in the interview, and brings a little bit different perspective to the group. Not a career politician by any means, not that any of us are, but he had kind of a fresh, unique perspective, I think, being a doctor. And I like the story of his opening of his practice. He was born and raised in Sioux, Ontario, which is kind of neat, and is naturalized citizen, and made his home here in Sioux St. Marie, Michigan. Pete's been very generous with his time and his money in the community. Any event, I think Pete is there. And I do like his, the thoughts that he has on making the Sioux a more bikeable, walkable friendly community. I know he's been very active in a lot of the groups that promote healthy lifestyles and which he does with his practice as well. He's not, not that being involved with the downtown business is bad, because I think it's fantastic, but we do have, I think, quite a few people that are already involved downtown, and I think he brings a different perspective from the business pur and from an ownership perspective. And I really did like his background materials. I've worked, I think, with every one of the candidates on different levels, and every one of them are fantastic. And wish we could hire four more, but my nomination and vote will be with Dr. Skornacki at this round.
Commissioner Talantino, your nomination.
No nomination at this time.
Commissioner Torrey, your nomination.
Well, I guess I will. I'll take the time to nominate Dr. Pete Skornacki. And I just wanted to make a few little comments. There was, all four of the candidates scored, again, really high in my mind, and I looked at, I had the same set of questions that I asked them all. And a lot of it goes back to me for like, is like ethics and integrity. And because if you're going to serve the citizens of Sioux St. Marie, you have to make sure that you understand what that means and that you are speaking for the community. You're not attempting to micromanage the city manager, because the city manager, he does run the city, and it's not our job to make sure that he's crossing his i's and dotting his t's. We are supposed to be here to help him move... We are supposed to be here to help him move the city forward through policy. But if we time saturate him, it sort of diverts us from our ultimate goals that we set on an annual basis. And a lot of the ethics comments that Dr. Pete set, made during his interview, I thought were right up there. And that's what sort of, that's what brought me on to his side. One of the things that Commissioner Gary and I have been talking about, one of the reasons that City of Sioux-St. Marie just received a million dollars is because we foster these relationships with our legislators. And we have these communications with them more than on an annual basis. We'll seen Senator Wayne Schmidt at a lot of the chamber luncheons. And who does he choose to sit with? He chooses to sit with us because we foster those relationships. And through that, we were able to receive a million dollars towards our carbide dock when we do go to fix it. And making sure, this is a two-year appointment, and so making sure that the person that is coming with us during those relationships and those conversations is very intelligent, speaking, not that the four candidates weren't. But it's really important to make sure that the city continues to move forward with that and with the goals. And that's why Dr. Pete, just the comments, the mannerism that he had, was very calm, very collected. And I liked the comments that he also made about merging Lake State and the city. We all talk about it. We know that we need to merge Lake State and the city. And if he can bring a fresh perspective to that, that's what I want to see over these next two years until the next election round. So my, my choice sticks with Dr. Pete Skornianki.
Thank you. So we have two nominations on the floor. The first nomination is Dr. Pete. All those in favor of Dr. Pete? All those in favor of Michelle LaJoy? We have a tie.
Okay, well, we're moving on. We have till the 13th, which is a Wednesday in December. And we'll have a special meeting possibly before then. City Manager. Probably the 11th, I'm guessing.
Thank you, Mayor. Administration will certainly plan for any special meeting called by City Commission.
Okay. Anyone have?
Are we going to try to have a special one before the 13th?
Probably only on the 11th.
Okay.
That's on Monday. Normally, we reserve our special meetings for normally a day or a night that we normally would have a meeting type of thing. Okay. Commissioner Gary.
Just the process again, we've gone over it about 10 times. But if we were not able to come up to a consensus of four votes, the process will be, what timeframe?
City Manager.
If the appointment is not made within the 30-day window of time, at that point, according to the research conducted by Deputy City Manager Troyer, it would be, it would go to a special election, which would be held on May 8th, 2018. There are certain timeframes within which the affidavit of identity and the nominating petitions would be required to be filed.
So we would have a vacancy until May 8th?
Until shortly after May 8th.
Shortly after.
Correct.
Commissioner Gary.
Which we might want to point out is post-goal setting, post-budget, which are the most important times in the year for the city commission. Most important times to have a full commission, I would say, and participation.
Do you, anyone have any questions? Okay. Okay. Next item.
Item five, communications. A is from Commissioner Baker. Request for information relating to Parks and Recreation.
Okay, Commissioner Baker.
Me first? I just want to explain kind of my whole thought process for requesting this information. One, first and foremost, I didn't think it would take the timeframe to gather that information as apparently it does. I didn't expect it the next day, but I didn't realize it wasn't, it was going to be as difficult as it is as far as time-consuming for employees to gather that. But my main reason for doing this is obviously Parks and Rec were a huge passion for me and I'm looking forward to talking it over at goal-setting. And as you guys just said, how important goal-setting and budget-setting is. And since it's only once a year, I would like to be prepared for that meeting as much as I possibly can. And digging deep into how the Polar and Parks and Rec are set up in general. And I also asked them for Malcolm Field as well, with working with that committee as well, trying to move that forward. And it's always been on my radar. It's one of the greatest tools in enhancing our city. Having detailed financial information will help me set some realistic goals for goal-setting. So I have information to study. It's like going in for an exam. You would never go in blind. I want to be prepared and do the best that I can in my position. Yeah, that's it.
Commissioner Gary.
It might be beneficial if City Manager could kind of outline the just cursory process that we use in goal-setting. So that Commissioner Baker understands the, kind of the flow of how it works as far as setting the goals, voting on the goals, and then moving forward, you know, through to the budget session. And at what point in time most of that information becomes available to us or is assembled and disseminated, I guess.
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Gary. Throughout the year, there are a number of processes which city administration conducts, which certainly informs the city commission prior to the goal-setting. Two examples of that would be the budget amendments, which the finance department prepares every three or four months, which helps the city commission to maintain an overview on city finances and the trends of available resources. A second example would be the development of the six-year capital improvement plan, which is currently being developed by city administration and would be in front of the city commission in January. These are the types of regular activities which administration conducts in preparation for goal-setting. Goal-setting is traditionally held the second Monday of each February. It's typically a full-day event, begins at nine o'clock traditionally and lasts through the day. Involves a review of the city's mission statement, the 2020 vision, a review of established goals, and a process through which existing commissioners are able to nominate goals. And with that process, at the end of the day, commissioners are given a predetermined number of stickers and with the postcards that have goals on them. If a postcard receives a majority vote, that is adopted as a goal. Traditionally, there are departmental fact sheets, which are prepared and included within the agenda for goal-setting. These fact sheets contain information about each department, the number of employees, full and part-time, approximate budget, challenges that the department foresees in the upcoming year, and the status of projects from time to time. In years past, I do know that former manager Niebel would have department heads present to the city commission, particularly if there were a number of new commission members. And there have also been, in the past, special presentations on topics during goal-setting. One example of that would be the 2015 goal-setting session during which the golf course and the disposition of the golf course was a significant discussion point. And other subject matters such as that have considered. The waterfront redevelopment study and focuses from DPW and engineering, for example, on this base need study, which was conducted for the Department of Public Works complex.
Commissioner Gary, is that conclusion?
You're welcome.
Commissioner Tordy.
Thank you. I think there was one more special meeting, and that was the seven-year Parks and Rec gathering that we brought the community together. And we got all that together before this CIP and then goal-setting of that year. And so this is, just to show Commissioner Baker, this is mine, but I'll let you borrow it for the week. This is my 17-18 budget. This is one of the books that you will get, and it's wonderful weekend reading material. But you get to literally go through it line item by line item. And if you want to take this home, I'll let you borrow it. And then I was also looking down, down some of your breakdown of some of the things that you're looking for. And I, I know that some of these things, and it's always great to have a lot of information, but some of these things, like the concessions, is, that is, we rent that out. And so understanding what his net income is, I don't, I'm not sure if the city is privy to that. Also, ticket sales, that probably goes to the event of the people that rent the arena. And the same would be for Malcolm Field, too. If we rent them, the ball fields out to a tournament, obviously, and they collect ticket sales, that money goes to the event planners, not to the city. So, so some of the things that you're asking for on here, I'm not sure if anybody had explained that to you. But always more information, the better. But...
If I could...
Commissioner Baker.
In discussion with that, though, I, in order, from what we've seen, what I've seen with the Polar, we lose money on it every year, which I know we're never more than likely going to generate a revenue on that facility. However, if we can close that gap, instead of losing between 200 and 300,000 a year, if there's a way that we can close that gap to 100, and in doing so, we get a surcharge on those, on the Eagles tickets. We get 50 cents a ticket. And if we're not keeping track of those tickets, who's to say? And I'm not saying that this is happening. I'm just going based off my business background and accountability and keeping track of records and whatnot. That's, I feel like we should be keeping track of the tickets alongside with, you know, with them, keeping track of those. For the amount of fundraising that was done for the Polar and how much the community, and I love the Polar. This isn't about, I want to see the Polar thrive more than it ever has. I want to see more events in there than just the Eagles. I would love to see Sioux High Blue Devils back in there. And getting this type of information would again help me set goals for goal-setting and be able to have input and be productive in it.
Commissioner, Commissioner Collins.
Yeah, I went through the list, and I don't see anything here that's out of the norm as far as if you're a program manager or director looking to see how a program is being run, these are great questions. So I actually, you know, commend you for the questions that you asked. And then as far as the ticket sales, Abby is absolutely correct. I mean, if we're getting revenue from ticket sales and we don't know what the ticket sales are, how do we know what we're supposed to receive? And on the other side of it is, I mean, these are basic questions. I mean, this is stuff that your financial department should be able to give you in a couple of days. I mean, utilities, heat, electric, water, Islaire costs, food and beverage costs, I mean, give me a break. If they don't have this information and it takes them a long time to pull it together, I want to know why.
Commissioner Gary.
And I don't want to back and forth, but you're right. It is information a program manager would look at. But as the commissioners, we go to goal-setting and Commissioner Baker may have a goal that says, I want to increase revenues at the Polar, or I want to change services here, I want to do this. And then as a group, we would come to a consensus. And if she gets three votes...
Four votes.
Four votes, then the information is gathered and worked on by the city administration. But it's premature before to be micromanaging. We could, we could look at this and refer it back to the administration, but...
Just let me, the information, I think, being asked, isn't that difficult? And according to City Manager, isn't that difficult to get? And that's something that we certainly can get. It would take a certain amount of time, but I think it's a, it's a question that the commission should deal with and not an individual commissioner as far as directing the city staff to get it. And that's what, why it's here before tonight. To have, and we have three, we're going to have four, hopefully, new commissioners by the time budget session comes around so that, and goal-setting. And the more information, I think we all agree, is, is good. And the business community that's, that's represented, there are certain things that we don't control for the most part, like the, we get a fee for concessions. That's a fee that's been established by the city. We are supposed to, at, I think, at the end of the year, get a statement from them that says what they, what they made, much like our campground. You know, on the Osborne campground, we know, you know, what the, what the profit is. We know what the city share is. We don't break it down to, I mean, they have how many, what they call them, camper nights and that kind of stuff. So I have no, I have no problem with, with what they're asking. I guess I'd like to hear from the city manager about, is that something that I know you can probably put it together? What are the hours looking like? And is it something that I'm sure is beneficial for, if it's beneficial for one commissioner, it's beneficial for all of us to take a look at. So, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So just a bit of background, at any point in time, city administration, which routinely makes a wide variety of reports available, receives a request for an existing report or one that takes a very minimal amount of time. City administration will prepare that if it's requested by an individual commissioner and will send it to the full city commission. It's been my understanding in the past that if more intensive work is involved in developing information, that should be taken to the city commission for consideration. I believe in this, in this instance, I don't believe that the finance department would be overburdened producing the information. I do think that it would probably require anywhere between seven and 11 hours worth of work. But I do know that the level of work would be commensurate with the level of detail which is requested by the city commission. There are informations and details which could be pulled from existing reports. And there is also information which would need to be calculated and broken down by the finance department.
Okay. Commissioner Collins.
Well, and I would say that when you're looking at the cost, that if it's not something that you guys have control of, for instance, like the concessions, you know, the food and beverage costs and the concessions, obviously, you're not going to know that information. So, yeah, I mean, I don't think that Commissioner Baker really expects you to go up and...
No, I didn't, I didn't know at the time that it was leased, but...
So I would say that, you know, if you can just prepare whatever you have, the access to, and then I guess, to me, I was really just surprised that it even came to us for the level of questions that I thought this was pretty basic questions, so...
I didn't have my mic on, sorry.
Oh. Okay. So the request... A motion to request A, yes.
I'll make a motion to request the information.
Support.
Support.
Okay. Any further comments? Commissioner Gary.
The extent of it is what?
What we, what the city has available that's not under contract with others.
Okay. And most of the information, I think, we've talked about polar revenue and income, revenue expense last, every budget cycle since I've been here. So we should have that information readily available.
Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, and I, I have received the financial, financials that say revenues, expenses, this. But I was looking more so with the user fees and who's using the ice time and where and what, and all of that information, a breakdown of both facilities, Malcolm and the Polar, to get a better idea of what we're dealing with.
City Manager, yeah.
The specifics.
Thank you for that comment, Commissioner. Based on if this is approved by the city commission, city administration would, would present the existing documents which detail some of this information and also calculate the information that it is able to within their request and would be bringing it back to the city commission as a status report, again, if it's approved.
Before budget time.
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. Okay. Everybody understand the motion? Do we need a voice? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
Item B under Communications is from Sioux Events, the I-500 snowmobile parade.
Okay. Mary Jo is here. Mary Jo DuVall from Sioux Events. Evening, Mary Jo.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me this evening. We are getting ready to try to attempt to break Guinness World Record of most snowmobiles in a parade for this upcoming 2018 year. in a parade for this upcoming 2018 year, um, during the I-500 week. We have worked with, um, several people on coming up with a route for the parade. We would like to be able to have it to start on Water and Ashman, move south on Ashman Street up to Eighth Avenue, and then head west on Eighth Avenue to the back of the parking lot for the I-500, where the snowmobile, um, parade participants will be able to attend that night's Woody's, um, Classic, um, races, as well as be involved with the food truck competition and things like that, that they have that evening, and the pub night crawl and everything. We are currently taking registrations online through the Sioux CVB and Sioux Events office, and I'm just here tonight to, um, get approval to have that parade go down Ashman Street, um, up to Eighth Avenue. And in, um, the process of that, um, we will have four to five different staging areas for the sleds. We will have over 1,000 sleds involved, so we'll need to break them up. They all will be utilizing our snowmobile trails, um, throughout our community, so that's great exposure for those people who haven't been on it before to be able to use our trails. Um, and then they'll also get an opportunity to go downtown.
Okay.
Any questions from anybody?
Commissioner Twardy?
This is probably more maybe for the city manager, but I'm, I'm wondering about the road closure. The road is closed all the time, and, uh, the poor businesses down on the north end of Ashman Street, as everybody knows, I have one there, we do not have alley access. So, if, when you shut down Ashman Street, you shut off my business. So, I understand for the parade, and I'm full support of that, but the rest of the businesses that are there, Salon C, we do not have parking anywhere else if you take up the corner parking lot and you shut down Ashman Street. So, can you inform me of how long will the road closure be, and can we only close half of the road for longer times and then the full road just for the parade? Since it is a business day.
Uh, thank you for that, that question, Commissioner. I may actually defer to city engineer Basista, if she would like to weigh in on this matter. Please.
Sorry.
Well, as I understand the staging, they're staging at Water and Ashman, Brady Park...
We are not only staging, um, at the casino, um, Ashman Bay, there's a group of people coming in from Brimley as well, and then we're working on two other locations. The farmer's market parking lot will not be closed off, there will be no staging or anything going on there, so you guys would be able to utilize that parking lot.
Okay.
And then we're just going to bring all those staging areas in, and then the parade will officially, for Guinness record purposes, start at the corner of Ashman and Water Street.
Okay.
Sure.
So, so I understand that, but it, like, when we close the road for the Fourth of July parade, sometimes we close it at 8:00 a.m.
In this case, the snowmobiles are just going to be using the southbound lane of Ashman, so the northbound won't be closed. So, it'll be a, it'll be a moving closure and not like a parade when we close the entire street for it. They'll be traveling in the, um, outer lane, when they get further down the spur, when there, where there's five lanes, they'll be traveling in the outer lane. So, there are no full road closures anticipated for this event.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner, Commissioner Baker?
I would just like to say, thank you, because this is something that I know a lot of us, um, businesses downtown that have been striving for a parade of this sort for some time now. So, I do understand the frustration with road closures and all that, um, but at the same time, we're bringing 1,000 people downtown, so hopefully they hang out and come back, so I just want to commend you for all your work. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do we have a motion yet? Commissioner, Commissioner Twardy?
I move that the city commission authorize the operation of snowmobiles on the proposed route, including Ashman Street and East Portage Avenue, and authorize the city engineer to issue a parade permit for the event and apply for an M-dot parade permit for Ashman Street, I-75 Business Center.
Support.
Support. The move's supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Basmas?
Yes. Motion carried, thank you.
May I just say one more thing?
Sure.
Real quickly, I hope everyone has the opportunity to come down and join us at the corner of Ashman and Portage, New Year's Eve, starting at 11:45 p.m., for our kickoff to our 350th anniversary with our, I believe, first ever ball drop.
Yes.
It can be amazing, so I hope you can come on and join us.
Thank Les and the, and that building, Les Townsend and his wife, Kelly, um, for that. And if you want to come back, uh, next meeting and announce it again, or we can do it without you being here, but it's, it's going to be a great time, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Item C under communications is from the Chippewa County Health Department Needle Exchange Program.
Okay, and Karen Senkus is here with us. Evening, Karen.
Good evening. Um, thank you for allowing me some time on the agenda tonight. I know I sent some information through, um, city manager Oliver Turner to share with the commissioners this evening on a project that I've been working on for the past couple of months through the health department, our Needle Exchange Program. And I just wanted to give you a little background and a little overview of where I am with that project right now. I'm not looking for any type of approval tonight, but looking more for questions that you may have, hoping to answer some questions, and then hopefully come back in a couple of months and give you another update. Um, basically, excuse me, one of the, one of the programs that we do through the health department, a mandated program, is that we track communicable disease. Um, we've been watching the trends for hepatitis C in our county for the past several years, and we're actually seeing an uptick in the number of cases of, of chronic hepatitis C. This last year, earlier in the fall, I was contacted by the state health department, because we are now fourth in the state of Michigan in regards to hepatitis C rates, okay? So, what they're looking for are health departments in rural areas that are struggling with high rates of hepatitis C or HIV, um, and they're looking to us to do something to try to get the rates down, to try to get a handle on these rates, um, and asked us to pilot a program for needle exchange in an effort to, to control the, the problem that we're having. So, in your packets that you were given a couple of weeks ago, I included just an overview of what needle exchange programs are, I included some local data, and I narrowed down the data that I gave you to, um, other counties within the upper peninsula. If you'd like statewide data, I can, I can bring you that as well. But I think it's really important to look at what's going on in the U.P. Um, and to let you know, needle exchange programs in general are, there are several located in lower Michigan, generally larger urban populations such as Kent County, um, Wayne County, Genesee County, areas such as that. There is no needle exchange program operating north of Traverse City, and I'm not even sure how, um, if Traverse City's program is up and running yet. If we can get this off the ground, and if we can work with our community and our people in the community that are using drugs, we would be the first needle exchange program in the U.P. So, I understand that this is a big undertaking. Um, because I'm focusing on the county, I was actually proposing a needle, um, a mobile unit so that we could outreach to other areas in the county. I know that, um, IV drug use doesn't just take place in Sioux St. Marie proper, I know that there's other pockets in the county where there's high incidences of, of use, and we want to make sure that we can reach the population as a whole. Um, one thing I want to mention, though, is that needle exchange is more than just exchanging dirty needles for clean needles, okay? That is, that is a, a huge part of it, we want to get those needles, we, we don't want people to reuse them, we don't want them to share them, we don't want people to discard them inappropriately. But along with them bringing in dirty needles and us giving them clean needles, there's also a huge component for education that goes along with it. We assess the individual every time they're seen in the needle exchange program. Generally, you're assessing for health overall, if there's more testing we can do, um, to make sure that they're healthy as a person, we want to be able to do that. We're assessing their housing, we're assessing their employment, and we're assessing their willingness and readiness to go into treatment, and then we would help, um, facilitate that to the best of our ability. So, I'm wondering if you have questions? I know it's, uh, like I said, this is, it's a controversial subject, I'm very aware of that. Um, I have been working with other townships throughout the county. Right now, um, Kinross Township is very, very supportive of this idea, they have to take, um, more information needs to go to their board as well. Um, I met with Bay Mills Township and Brimley Township, you know, over the last month, supportive as well. Um, locally, I've met with War Memorial Hospital administrators, and I've met with Sioux Tribe Health Center administrators. Um, both of those entities have to speak with their board, and they'll need some more information, too, but initially, the idea, um, has been met positively, which I'm, I'm glad to see. So, just wondering, does anyone have questions? Is there any information you'd like from me to bring back or email through Mr. Turner?
Commissioner Gary?
I've never been so torn on an issue, there are so many pros and cons. And, uh, I'm assuming that the, uh, statistically, the rates of hepatitis C go down probably with this, but what about drug use overall? Are there statistics that would show us that this actually helps to decrease illegal drug use?
There are, and admittedly, when needle exchange started, they started in the mid-'80s during the HIV crisis. Um, all of the data up until very, very recently has been, has focused on, on AIDS and HIV. Finally, within the last six weeks or so, we, I received a global report showing that, that there is indication that needle exchanges also help bring HIV, or hepatitis C rates down, and they do help get people into treatment. Um, the, the, I don't know if you want to call it a problem or the issue is, that the addict still has to be ready to go into treatment themselves. Um, you know, we fully expect if we can start this program, we're going to be seeing the same people over and over and over, and we want that. We want them to know that they can come, that, that it's a safe place, and that every time they come, we're going to provide them with more education, and we're going to, we're going to gauge where they are. I can find those stats for you, though, and I can send them your way, but yes, it, there, there is data that shows that, that it does lead to a decrease in drug use.
You still have a floor?
And what type of, uh, and I know you don't have a request on the table, but what type of, of support would be, you be looking for from the city, from the county, from the townships?
Um, location. So, if we, if we can get a mobile unit up and running, the idea is that we can move that unit around. So, um, it would be, where could we set up within the city limits? And I, and I, I am very aware of downtown businesses, of businesses in general, I understand that, uh, we're not going to want to park a mobile unit right next to Harmony Health Food Store. But that's why I would look to this commission for suggestions, for opportunities, um, any of that.
Okay. Commissioner Twardy?
Excellent question, thank you for asking about the statistics, because I was curious about that, too, and it, this is, this is a really controversial subject, and I remember attending an LEPC meeting maybe three years ago before Dr. Dave Martin retired from, uh, who you took his position at the Chippewa County Health Clinic, and this was sort of a pipe dream of his back then, to even start discussing it. And obviously, when you look at the number of people who are dying on an annual basis, what this, the number just came out, right? Over 70-some thousand people died in 2017, correct? From drug overdose, and I know this is not going to fix that, but what we're doing is not working.
Yeah.
Because when you look at that amount of people that are dying, is, it's overwhelming, it's staggering, and it's so sad, and hepatitis C is, is because of that. And, and then the laws that are changing on January 1st because of prescription drugs, who knows what's going to happen to the amount of people that are using IV drugs after that, because people are going to have to manage their pain somehow, and when you're an addict, you're an addict. And, uh, so I would like to think that this will help and not hurt, and I would like to be a little bit more forward-thinking and know that you've done your research, I trust you, I trust your colleagues, that you're doing what you are going to do to help keep the community safe and hopefully bring down the rates of hepatitis C within the county, which are going to drain us.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, because it is a very, very expensive illness.
It is, and if you look at, there's one sheet of data in there that shows, um, the ages of people that have been diagnosed with hepatitis C, um, the majority are between 20 and 29 at this time. So, you are looking at a chronic disease, a lifelong disease. Um, and hopefully, if we can get people in recovery, they're still going to have to deal with that disease. They might be, they might be healthy in terms of their addiction, but they are going to have a lifelong illness that they're going to have to deal with, and, and it's a costly, very, very costly illness. I did attach some information about hepatitis C from the CDC, because in general, if you haven't dealt with it, um, a lot of people aren't familiar with it, so...
Commissioner Baker?
Uh, the, the epidemic that we have, not only in our community, but really everywhere, but especially in the U.P., um, I think this, again, uh, reiterating what Kathy just said about, I think it'll be more good than bad. Um, my question is, is there a treatment, like you said, there would be education along with it, is there an option to get them somewhere if they want, like the Angel Program, is that going to be tied into that?
We would work with, yes, I met with, um, Sean Baker from Great Lakes Recovery Centers pretty early on in this process, because ideally, we want to send referrals his way. You know, we're looking for people to get into treatment. So, I didn't want to start anything without giving him a heads up that your enrollment numbers might increase, we hope that they increase. So, yes, he's aware, Great Lakes Recovery Centers is aware, I spoke to, um, Joe Shire from the state police post about a month ago as well, because I know that, I believe, his post runs the Angel Program, um, just to give people a heads up that, that we're thinking about this. So, I have to go back and revisit everything if we can secure the funding, um, but yes, that's, that's the hope.
Thank you. Any other questions? So, the, I think the recommendation is to refer to the administration?
Uh, that is correct, Mayor. The recommendation is that commission authorize city administration to further research, uh, the proposal on the mobile needle exchange program for possible action at a future meeting.
Okay. Commissioner Twardy?
I move that we approve the city manager's recommendations.
Support.
The move's supported, are there any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Basmas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Item D under communications is from Jeffrey Burnett, construction and alterations at 705 Court Street.
Okay, thank you. Is, uh, Mr. Burnett in the audience? Okay, he is not here, we will move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Item A under the city manager's report would provide authorization for wage adjustments for non-union employees. As commissioners are aware, city administration has been engaged in negotiations with the clerical, firefighters, police patrol, police records, and public works bargaining units for the past several months. During its last regular meeting held on November 20th, the city commission approved and negotiated collective bargaining agreements with both the public works and clerical bargaining units. Among other provisions, both agreements included a 2% wage increase for bargaining unit members for each covered fiscal year. At the conclusion of previous collective bargaining cycles, the city commission has taken action to adjust the compensation received by employees who are not represented by a bargaining unit. Accordingly, included with this report, city commissioners will find updated wage tables for non-union employees. There's also on the day is an updated table, uh, which correctly reflects the salary for the community development director. The revised wage tables do not reflect any proposed increases for the EDC director or DDA director, as those are issued by their respective boards or employees who are subject to an offer letter. Importantly, it should be noted that city attorney Canelo has advised that wage increases for non-union employees can be issued retroactive to July 1st, due to the fact that it is known during the budget development process that wage increases are possible for the duration of the upcoming fiscal year in a manner differing from bargaining unit employees. The non-union employees of the city of Sioux St. Marie have continued to deliver outstanding service to the Sioux St. Marie community. Department heads complete a wide variety of complex tasks with continuously compressed resources while shouldering a substantial share of the management burden of city operations. Their commitment and accomplishments are evident and impressive. Similarly, non-union employees who are not department heads complete a wide variety of complex and... of complex administrative tasks and offer vital support to the functionality of the city and service to citizens. Their dedication and skills contribute daily to the advancement of the community's quality of life. As noted previously, the city has maintained fiscal stability under challenging circumstances that are impacting many other municipalities within the state of Michigan and under circumstances unique to the city of Sioux St. Marie. Concurrently, the proposed wage increases, in my assessment, strike the correct balance between ensuring this stability continues and attracting and retaining skilled employees whose efforts contribute to the advancement of the community. The agreed-upon wage increases are also in line with those issued in peer communities. On a related note, at the conclusion of the city manager's performance evaluation earlier in 2017, I had requested, and the performance evaluation committee agreed, that I would not receive any increase in compensation until further progress was made with negotiations with the city's collective bargaining units. Applying a 2% wage increase to the city manager's current salary would increase it from $93,177 to $95,040. On behalf of city administration, I would like to thank the city's non-union employees for their continued contributions to the city and to advancing the highest quality of life possible within the community. Accordingly, it's my recommendation that the city commission approve a 2% wage increase for non-union employees retroactive to July 1st, as detailed within the included wage tables and as presented. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Okay, thank you. And then, I would also, pardon, include in the recommendation, including the city manager's wage also? Because that was a, back in, as was stated, back in the last spring, we were waiting for the bargaining units to decide what that percentage was going to be, and then the manager would also get the same increase, okay? Commissioner Twardy.
Yeah, thank you. You're so funny. Your voice got a little bit more quiet when you had to start talking about yourself, you're so modest. And I'm proud of you for taking the job, and for sitting here for just a, just a hair over four years, this is the first time that it's come across my desk in this format, and I really appreciate it. I think it's great to almost do non-collective collective bargaining with the department heads, and I, I think that they work their buns off. I can't tell you how many times I see some of the department's heads at 6 o'clock in the morning, and so I know that they're not doing an hourly job, it is a salary job, and they definitely work really hard. So, that being said, I appreciate the way that you brought this to us, and I'm very happy to say, to make the recommendation that along with the city manager, that we approve a 2% wage increase for non-union employees, and that includes the city manager's 2% increase also, retroactive to July 1st, 2017, as detailed within the included wage tables.
Support. Can I move support, are there any questions? Before we go, I'd move on this, I, or vote on this, I would like to state again, that we are so fortunate as a city to have certainly the department heads that we have and the staff, but truly to have the city manager that we have. And start, well, you're into your third year, and just do an exceptional job for the city of Sioux St. Marie, and without a doubt, you make our jobs here a lot easier, believe me. So, thank you very much, and continued, continuing here in Sioux St. Marie, we appreciate it.
Thank you for those comments. It certainly is a pleasure to, to be a part of the community, to serve it to the best of our abilities and to work with the commission and the team that is in place here. It's a pleasure, thank you.
And don't want to go without mentioning our city attorney, who's been here for a very long time, and just does an exceptional job, well, we, we know he's the best city attorney in the state of Michigan, and wealth of knowledge, and thank you very much, Deke.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Mayor Baspas.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Motion, Gary, thank you.
That concludes the city manager's report. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Okay, thank you. Item number seven, status reports.
Item A under status reports pertains to an update on the city, village, township revenue sharing program, compliance with the program and revenue sharing overall. As an update, during the course of the last several years, the state of Michigan has made significant changes to the means through which statutory revenue sharing is distributed to local units of government. Specifically, Public Act 63 of 2011 introduced the Economic Vitality Incentive Program, which required local units of government to meet certain conditions to obtain the full amount of statutory revenue sharing for which they are eligible. The state initially introduced this program to require certain accountability and transparency reportings, to promote consolidation of services and collaboration, and to encourage modifications to employ compensation packages offered by local units. The program was later modified to become the City, Village, and Township Revenue Sharing Program. Importantly, the applicable portion of the statutory requirements for this program state that local units are to produce a citizen's guide of its most recent local finances, including a recognition of its unfunded liabilities, produce a performance dashboard, a debt service report containing a detailed listing of its debt service requirements, and a projected budget report, including at a minimum, the current fiscal year and a projection for the next following fiscal year. The city of Sioux St. Marie has long embraced transparency and compliance with this program is an extension of these historic efforts. Importantly, the city of Sioux St. Marie has complied with the submission deadline of December 1st, 2017, for this year's iteration of the program, ensuring that the city will obtain $419,942 in revenue sharing from the state of Michigan's 2018 fiscal year budget. Of note, the city has complied with both the Economic Vitality Incentive Programs and the CVTRS programs since their introductions and modifications. Citizens are able to review these documents on the city's website at www.soulcity, S-A-U-L-T city dot com, or at the city clerk's office. Specifically, I'd like to extend my appreciation to Deputy City Manager Troyer, Finance Director Collins, and IT Director Raphael for their work in pulling together the information for this year's submission and ensuring program compliance. On a very closely related note, it should be emphasized that the state of Michigan has, since fiscal year 2002, and from that time to fiscal year 2016, reduced the amount of revenue sharing received by the city of Sioux St. Marie by 27.8% from a total amount received during fiscal year 2002 to fiscal year 2016. During the same period of time, the state of Michigan has increased its own budget by 29%. In total, it is estimated by the Michigan Municipal League that the city of Sioux St. Marie has lost $6,486,439 in total revenue sharing since these structural reductions progressively pursued beginning in fiscal year 2002 and '03 by the state of Michigan. Certainly, the city of Sioux St. Marie will continue to advocate for and support significant increases in revenue sharing that would restore funding levels to previous amounts. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
That also continues to be one of our goals, and we always mention it when we're talking with our state legislators, and they, they know it's, it's been a tremendous burden for the city to absorb those kind of cuts until maintain the services that we maintain as a, as a city to our citizens, so. Just in preparation for the budget session going ahead, Commissioner Twardy.
Thank you. Yeah, more of a comment, and not that I'm going to shake a stick at the $419,942 we did receive in, in revenue sharing, but when I saw this on the agenda, I got kind of excited for better news.[1104.83][1104.83](Laughter). So it would be great if we can continue talking about both kinds of revenue sharing, not just the statutory revenue sharing, because, and what's the other type of revenue sharing?
Constitutional.
Constitutional. I know that one goes into completely different funds that we also need help with, so making sure that the revenue sharing does come back, because otherwise, the cities are going to continue to be burdened by not being able to take care of roads and, and low budgets, so.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Thank you for the status report.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. That concludes the prepared status reports.
Okay. Item number eight, matters presented by the public. Is there anyone in the audience like to make a comment at this time? Okay, hearing them, we'll go on to the city commission, matters presented by the city commission. Let me just begin by thanking a lot of activity over the last week, week and a half, just run through fairly quick. Certainly, the Parker Ace Hardware Christmas Parade was a little wet, but a tremendous amount of people, and we certainly thank Scott Parker and his family and the employees of Parker Hardware for their continued support of the Christmas Parade, because it's always a highlight, certainly this time of the year, and we certainly thank them for their support. Sunday, of course, the Madrigal Dinner this past weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, tremendous activity for hospice in the area. Hospice of Eastern UP, we all know, don't charge for their services, and just a very nice program. And I understand that they had somewhere around 160 people, more than they had last year, so that's, that's a good thing, and the place is packed, and certainly thank the community for their involvement in, in support of hospice, and thank the commission for first-time table for the, for the commission, and thank you for reaching your pockets and providing that support to hospice. Also, I think it was Saturday night, Linda LaFord from Sioux Housing retired after many years of service to the community in, in providing housing for the less fortunate, and Linda and Jim, her husband Jim, retired on the same day, so there was a party in, in her honor that she was surprised to have, and that was a great time. And then, certainly, we got in the mail today, light up the Sioux brochure from Sioux Events, thank you, Mary Jo and Company, and from the Tower of History, it's a great view, and we certainly encourage people going forward. That was Commissioner Ray Bauer at the time initiated that program, and light up the Sioux, certainly is here to, here to stay, and the more people that light up their homes, and I know the city, front of the city hall is great, I think we have some, a little problem with sometimes the decorations in the downtown, but maybe, maybe a budget session, we can maybe look at possibly doing something there to, to help that, because coming to the downtown area, it should, there should be something that hits you, and maybe it's the Ashman Street Bridge getting lit up, something that gives you a bang, you know what I mean? And that's what people have been talking about. You know, the wreath was partially lit on, on the one side, the other two wreaths do fine, but you know, maybe talking about that at goal session too, might be a way to, to help all, all that area, part, part of the light up and make, you know, a month and a half type of thing, really special in the downtown area. Commissioner Twardy.
Thank you. Well, I would like to speak on behalf of our favorite IT director, Bonnie Raphael, and I want to announce that KDR is joining forces with our Chippewa County Sheriff's Department and trying to save lives out there during our holiday season for destructive driving. So that includes, so they'll be handing out, of course, at the officer's discretion, little cards about what the statistics are for destructive driving, how you can keep yourself safe this holiday season, and so if you are seen without your seatbelt, eating while driving, drinking while driving, using your iPhone, or any other forms, which there are many, of destructive driving, they have the opportunity to pull you over and just give you one of these little cards that will let you know how you can keep yourself and your family safe and other people on the road. So thank you to KDR, and of course, thank you to all of our support staff, Chippewa County's Sheriff, of course, city of Sioux St. Marie, and state police, so we appreciate all of your help in that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Collins.
I actually have a couple things. The first thing is, I've received a lot of calls in reference to the consolidation of the public schools. I don't know if anybody else has gotten any calls on that. Is there any recommendation as far as what, I guess, citizens can do? I mean, wouldn't, would it be that they're supposed to contact?
I would, I would suggest they go to the public school.
Okay.
Public meeting that the public schools have, and if there's something out there that the public schools are talking about doing, I, I would think the forum for that would be at the public schools, I believe. Are their meetings open to the public? I mean, I know they're open to the public, but are they on TV? Do we know? No way. They used to be at one time, but I would think the community would, I'm sure on Facebook a lot of folks are talking about it, I would see you approach your school board members, and you go to the school board. Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I think they just announced today that they moved the location because of the anticipation of such a big meeting, a big turnout for Thursday night school board meeting, it's going to be at the high school cafeteria now.
So there is a school board meeting at the high school cafeteria?
On Thursday.
On Thursday?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, I think. Normally, seven o'clock? Okay.
I believe it's Thursday the 14th.
Pardon?
I believe it's Thursday the 14th.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thursday the 14th? Uh, I'm looking in December, there's no 14th, oh, Thursday the 14th, yep. Next week.
I thought it was this week for somewhere.
Okay.
I thought it was the 11th.
At least check the schedule. Okay, anything else?
Yeah, it is December 7th, it's this Thursday. Yep.
Just a couple things.
December 7th? Okay.
You guys have probably got these before, but as I'm a new commissioner, you know, I'm getting people that are reaching out to me, so one of, one of the things is, and I don't know if this was addressed with the MDOT, with the new circular out there, is there anything going to be out there for pedestrians using bikes? Going to, I mean, I know they have the sidewalk going out towards like Walmart, right, and then, I don't know if it's going to get extended to Myers, so that the bikes can go there? And then, the question really is, is how to cross the road from the, where the bike lane is now, or the sidewalk? I don't know. Do you know that answer, Kathy?
Uh, city manager with the new roundabout and the construction, maybe you want to...
Does that have the...
Does that have the...